This is Monday, March 13th, 2017. It is 4:31-ish. I'm Thomas Jase with Council Chambers. We'll be rolling right downhill today. We will have Mayor's Awards next week. Number two, we have a public hearing. First, consideration of purchase agreement.
This isn't coming up. There it is.
Consideration of purchase agreement for the property located at the southwest corner of South Fifth Street and Maple Street, City of Burlington, Iowa. What conditions? Mr. Tisland.
This is the same property we had the agreement to award construction bid last week on for construction of a new home through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, the NSP. We have remaining funds to construct one additional home. Went through the process this past winter of trying to find someone to be pre-qualified to purchase a home, which is what the state desired us to do before starting construction. So we had an open house at the Maple Leaf Center, did some advertising on Facebook and through the newspaper, trying to get someone to qualify to purchase this home. They are required to have no more than 50% area meeting income, which is a big hindrance, but also have the ability to secure a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage, which that combination is very difficult to do.
That'd be tough, yeah.
We did have an individual, Amanda Waters, go through the process and qualify through the NSP program, as well as for a loan through Two Rivers Bank. And working with her, wanting to work with her through the process, it's on the construction and ensuring financial ability to continue to buy the home. So we're selling this home, I guess, before actual construction through this purchase agreement. The purchase price is the maximum amount that she can qualify for a mortgage for, $28,500. The remaining amount is bought down through the NSP program. Those are funds that upon sale of the property just go back into the NSP program. So once we're done with this home, we'd be at essentially done with the program. So this is a three-bedroom, two-bath home with a detached garage on the corner of Maple Street and Fifth Street. There are some details in the purchase agreement, but this is, would be selling the home upon completion of the construction of the home. After certificate of occupancy, we would transfer deed and do a closing at that point. Something a little different than we've done in the past, but wanted to work with this individual throughout the process. Any questions on this?
Twenty-eight thousand dollars. Correct?
Yep, twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
That's based on her ability to pay?
Yep.
Yeah, because it's lower of the assessed value?
Well, and actually, I think there'll be a change in the ordinance. The purchase price of the home will be the actual cost of the home or the praise value, but then we'll buy that amount down to twenty-eight thousand five hundred. So the purchase price will be listed on the actual deed. It'll be the, in the past, it's been ninety, a hundred thousand, but then we're able to subsidize that amount through the NSP program. So as a clarification, but that's the most she can pay out of, or qualify for a loan for.
Okay. Wow, what a deal. We don't, we don't get money back out of the deal?
No, we get zero money back.
We just use up the grant.
Yep, and we never can get money back out of the program either.
Yeah, right.
Anytime we've sold a home in the past, remember if the grants start out with like six hundred thousand, when we build a house and sell it and do the improvements, the sale price goes back into the program funds, and then we take a loss with every home. Not we, but the grant money does, and then we're now at the end of the point where this will be the final project.
Wow.
That's the whole idea what the Neighborhood Stabilization Program was about, though, was to take a neighborhood that has seen deterioration in market values occur and to try to build, either build new or to rehab homes and get a single-family tenant-owner occupied in it that allows for some, some level of homeownership to happen in those neighborhoods and try to stabilize values. That's the intent. It's, it's designed to have properties be in a spot where you're getting someone in their price that they would not, otherwise you wouldn't see a project occur there.
Right.
We've done roughly half and half rehab or new construction. Rehab can be just as much based on the lead paint requirements and all the other requirements that we have to do with windows and insulation than building new. But yeah, the intent is to get new, nice properties under homeownership in some of these neighborhoods. There is a specific neighborhood that we can do this in. This isn't a citywide grant. We had to apply for certain areas in North Hill, South Hill. Sanderson Heights is kind of the general area, our older neighborhoods.
Well, it's a tremendous program. What a, what a deal. I'm assuming anybody who qualifies is vetted to make sure they'll take care of the property or not just?
To the most extent that we can. They have to go through a class, an online class through the NSP program. The idea was to try and work them through financial classes as well by doing this up front to make sure they can maintain it.
All right. Thank you, Nick.
You good?
Sure.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Gannon Street and Whittaker Street right-of-way's adjacent to the property located at 1104 Gannon Street, Burlington, Iowa. It's the first reading. Mr. Tisland.
This is a request by Mark Brockway to vacate portions of right-of-way adjacent to properties owned all under Brockway Company, Mark Brockway. They're currently under construction of a new office building at the corner of Whittaker and Osborne, and they own all the properties adjacent to this. Would like to have a little more security and control over access through the site with their vehicles. They did request to vacate the property. Would stop just south of the property at 1417 Iowa so that it's not vacated adjacent to their property. There is a sewer line running through this. There would be a easement maintained over the sewer line, but they do desire to install a gate at the property with a Knox padlock or Knox box to again maintain some control there. This did go to the Planning Commission February 22nd. They voted five to zero to recommend approval of the vacating of the right-of-way based on the applicant owning all the adjacent property, maintaining an easement and access for emergency personnel.
You guys good? Any questions?
Yep.
Okay. Number four. Public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling the alley running from Columbia Street to Washington Street between Front Street and Main Street, Burlington, Iowa. First reading on that. Mr. Tisland.
This again, they're under, a couple lots are under separate names, but all owned under Drake or Genesee Industries. They're desiring to vacate the alley in order to possibly expand their kitchen off the Drake Restaurant into the property. They do have the parking lot there and did recently purchase the former Billups Store as well, so do own all the adjacent property. Again, this went to the Planning Commission February 22nd, voted five to zero based on petition of the applicant and providing a utility easement to Line Energy. There is an overhead line there that they've been in discussion with them on. Currently, they do not have any garbage service. I think they use their current garbage service for the, there's two apartments on Main Street, and that got brought up as possible concern down the road, but going through the review process, there's no issues currently.
So 408 is part of the Genesee properties too?
Yep.
The two apartments?
Yeah. Like Sam lives in one of them, and one of them's a rental.
You guys good?
Sure. Yep.
Okay. Number five. Consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Greenway Burlington Associates for encroachment into Valley Street right-of-way at 2312 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa.
This one came before the council end of last year as well. Some of the concerns at the time were not having a mechanized gate for staff getting out to snowplow and having to open the gate in snow weather and possible hazard or injury, as well as ability to get into the site for emergency personnel. Had some discussions at the staff level, as well as with Jim Adams, the maintenance supervisor, manager for the site. And as you see in some of the conditions, going to install a manual gate that would remain open December 1st through March 1st and open immediately by the property management should snow accumulation warrant at other times of the year. Would maintain a Knox padlock on the gate, as well as do fire lane striping and signage as needed for the site. So the gate would remain there year-round, would be closed from March 1st through December 1st, and then remain open December 1st through March 1st so it can be properly snowplowed and accessed in that manner.
Didn't we look at this before?
Yep, we looked at it. Discussion of concerns over getting out to open the gate and while the option of a electronic gate could be installed. These all have been sent through to Newbury Property Management. Their board discussed it, and Jim said they're all fine with it and agree that this is a good idea to move forward with, so.
You guys have questions on that?
No problem with fire. That's all been looked at.
Fire, police are all right with it now.
No problem. Okay, good.
I have the, the only concern I have is the street is identified at the corner of Flint Hills in either Valley or Argyle as Argyle Street, and we have it identified on the GIS as Valley Street, and one of those needs to change so that the, that the ordinance reads right. I don't, I don't know if it's angular or if it's Val, Argyle or Valley that we're vacating.
You good, Mr. Tisland?
Yep, I'll check on that.
See what I see on that?
Yeah, yep, I see that. I'll check that.
You say it is an electronic gate?
No, this would be a manual gate that would remain open and then padlocked shut during the non-snow months with a Knox padlock that the emergency personnel could access.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay. Next, resolution approving loan agreement authorizing the issuance of $9,555,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2017B, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
This is a follow-up of last week's action that was taken for the issuance of bonds. Identifies a principal amount to be paid back by year with a premium or interest that would be on it, and then it has a detailed listing of the taxes that would need to be assessed to cover the bond payments by year after that. Again, this is for several different projects, one of them being the police department remodel, $2.2 million. Three different TIF projects that are involved on here, the roundabout being one that's associated with Silgan. Another one being a rise match for GE project on Agency Street west of Roosevelt Avenue, and the third being Agency Street east of Roosevelt Avenue, doing some widening or street improvements on that piece as well. And the final portion of this, of this borrowing being for the flood wall in the downtown area that is set to be paid back with the sales tax increment over the, from the state over the next, the growth that is designed to occur there over the next 20 years. Those, if you look at the bond repayment schedule, and Travis went through this when he was here last week and in the past, what you see that's on the longer, the longer-term repayment is the TIF, or I'm sorry, the, the flood wall, the, the sales tax amount. Those funds are being paid, we're getting the sales tax money. It grows incrementally over time. It's the larger amounts that we receive are in the back end, it's on the back end. So we, and you see here that these payments are designed to hit on those back-end payments. In fact, the first few, first few years of growth, very, very little of the first few years of growth is, is used or dedicated towards this project. Those funds will be dedicated towards the second phase.
And how confident are we that we're going to meet the projections from the state and from the growth, Tisland?
Well, I mean, the whole, when this was sent in, the, the project was designed, was it on a 15-year basis? I think we'd had 1.4% growth in sales tax, and I might be wrong on these percentages, but when we had this, it's either, it was either that we'd had a 15-year history of 1.4%, and this was designed to look at 1.1% annualized growth, so a percentage below On average, the first year, we were well above. We haven't received, unless we had in the last, the last half of last week, and I didn't see it, we hadn't received any payments for this year. We haven't seen, gotten the first quarter's payment yet to know how we are for being on track. Regardless, long-term projections would show that this bond issue specifically should be, shouldn't be in, one that's at risk, just because we are relying on compounded growth over a period of time. We're not coming up any, we're not anywhere near what the anticipated payment schedule is. If we were to see any shortcomings, it should impact other, other phases of the project as we move forward.
Okay.
But ultimately, we are, this is a GO bond, and the council does need to understand that we backstop that debt. The nature of the way this is structured, though, there would have to be a, pretty much a complete falling apart of how sales tax growth has occurred in the past, which certainly could happen, but it wouldn't match, it wouldn't match what historical trends have been.
Okay, thank you.
You guys good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Move to consent. A resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for higher license for Ramakonova doing business as A to Z Taxi Cab LLC. You guys, any issues? Okay. Number two. Resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for higher license for Executive Transportation LLC doing business as Executive Transportation LLC. You guys good?
Sure.
Number three is resolution approving purchase of a new city bus for Burlington Urban Service.
The, the resolution before you would approve a purchase of a light-duty bus in the sum of 85,000. I don't have the full figure. 281. This will be using our own funds. We did not receive any grant funds for this. We have not replaced a city bus in four or five years. The one that we would be replacing is, is sitting out back, essentially useless at this point, and the other ones are costing us more money in fixing, so this will be a nice, you know, addition to get put into the schedule so we don't have as much VM costs. If you'd like to see a schematic, I think I gave one to Eric.
I have a request. Some, some people would like to see us put bike racks on the buses. Other communities are doing that. They said, any chance that, this, this is what I was told. They're all for it. If we'll put a bike rack on the back of that bus, but if we're not going to put a bike rack on the back of it, then we should shoot it down.
I guess I have not looked at a bike rack addition to it. I, I'd have to do between now and next Monday, try and get that in front of you. It could also be done aftermarket, I get, not aftermarket, but after, after the purchase of the bus, we could potentially add that. I don't know what that would all entail. It would mean the first fleet in our bus, so it would, it'd be the only one that would have bike racks, but we could outfit the rest of them. I just don't know what that capital cost would be.
I, I said that I would have, I would have you look into it to see what it would, what it would entail and what it would be, but there is interest from people that would like to use the bus system and bike, you know what I'm saying, to get to?
Correct, yep.
How is ridership on our buses, by the way, Weber?
Ridership from last fiscal year to this fiscal year is down a little bit.
Just a little?
220,000 the previous year and 205,000 this year, so 15,000.
National ridership is down too, but I don't know what percentage. But that kind of matches national trends over the last couple of years. Our system has been down, but we also cut, we eliminated one of our Saturday.
One of the Saturday service buses.
More people are riding their bikes. More people want to start riding their bikes.
Is it light duty? You mean there's a smaller number of passengers? Is that what that means?
Correct. This one is 16 to 18 passengers, and then with the wheelchair ability, that also limits it. When you start putting in wheelchairs, you have to take down two of the seats, so it means four rides.
Our fleet is all light duty and medium duty?
Correct. We have no heavy-duty buses left.
Okay.
And again, we haven't bought a bus since I've been here, and our fleet shows it. The last, we, we bought several through the era funding, and at that time, they were mass-produced at a level well beyond what they had been previously, just because there was federal funding, new federal funding available. We've seen, those have been less dependable than our older buses within our fleet.
Yeah, unfortunately, one of our best-running buses is probably one of the older ones. And, and the one thing that we are switching, this is a 6.8-liter gas engine. Some of our fleet is diesel, and that has caused us problems because of the emissions buildup. When you have a lot of idle time and not a whole lot of, you know, up to 60 mile an hour, we at the most probably get up to 45 going down Roosevelt. So we're going to try and look to switch the whole fleet over to gasoline. Now, moving to like CNG, there is probably a cost reduction in, in the fact that you're going to be paying a little bit less in the, for the fuel, but the amount that you're paying on the front end for the, the modification is significant, and without CNG on-site, I didn't think it was worth looking, switching over at this time.
You guys good?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Nick.
Next, we have a resolution establishing an angled parking zone. Why are you still standing there? I was going to let you walk back some. Okay, just standing.
Turn around.
We have a resolution establishing, establishing an angled parking zone on the north and south side of the 400 block of High Street. Mr. McGregor.
Yeah, this, this change or addition to the, the striping policy that we have came from the Parking Advisory Committee with the development of the, I don't know the site, the old man, or the old hospital. There's a, there's definitely a need for some more parking, and this would entail some straight-in parking off of High Street, as you can see on the screen.
Oh, so it's 90-degree parking?
Correct.
Not angled?
Well, I don't know why it's called angled. It should be straight in.
Which is what it is right now.
Correct. It's just a line of demarcation of where people should actually park.
Yeah, okay.
You guys good?
I guess I'm confused from what, say that again.
The, the change would be that we would actually mark out specific parking spots. I think the problem is, is people just start parking there, and it reduces the amount of space for parking.
It used to be marked.
There, in fact, some of the lanes are still there. They just, hard to see.
And I don't know exactly when it was taken off the list, probably when there's some cost reductions that went on. So there would be a budget implication on it. We purchased quite a bit of paint at the beginning of the season, and the timeframe to do this wouldn't take very much.
We're good?
Yep.
This could be straight-in parking and not angled parking.
I will get that specific answer to you on Monday. I don't have that right now. I, I believe it's 90-degree parking.
That's what it is now, but.
So we're not adding any parking, actually?
We're just painting?
Just painting.
Just, just to find in where the parking spots are?
Correct.
Good?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Nick, just stay right there. Next, we have a resolution establishing an angled parking zone in the 500 block of Market Street.
This resolution came forward as kind of a conversation with Harmony Church. There was an initial request to try and vacate this property. It is currently a street rather than do that. Essentially, what they were looking for was parking spots, and so what this would turn into is not specifically for Harmony Church, but public parking. It is, it's fairly unused space right now. There is a sewer line that goes underneath of there. Market Street used to go before the Sixth Street Overpass came in, so it would add 13 to 14 parking spots, and all it really would entail is, is striping it, but allowing access for that garage underneath.
And again, it's 90-degree.
This, this is actual, this is 90-degree parking.
Right, so we need, yeah.
This, this is 90-degree parking. I apologize. I had to look at, I didn't prefer, put this material together, so it is 90-degree parking.
Is, on the, on Fifth, Fifth Street, you're probably going to lose a couple of parking spaces there. Come back up. On Fifth Street, you're probably going to lose, lose a couple of parking spaces there, possibly because of getting in and out of that.
There was no parking spaces. You probably lose one there, and I, they have a larger parking plan for, as the church, I mean, this, this is separate from the church, but they have a larger parking plan across the Fifth Street to also purchase property and put in a park, some parking stalls, but you probably will lose one. Gosh, I can't spit it out tonight. You probably will lose one parking spot.
Okay, the, another problem I had with that is, it's like you can't pass, cross, pass two cars, two cars can't pass on this drive going into, to Market Street. It's not wide enough, and there's no turnaround. Is there a plan for putting in a hammerhead or something to be able to turn vehicles around particularly?
Should you go in there and find that all the parking spots are full and then have to get out? I think that the allow, the, with keeping the driveway area open would probably allow for you to do that, and since it's 90-degree, you could be, if you did find a parking spot and you're able to pull in, you could back out the other direction, but if it was full, you could simply probably go down and turn to the dri, part of the driveway. Some, I, I would say that the area that looks like concrete is, is his property, so I would say to keep people away from that, but the area that's in the right-of-way is still usable.
So you could go all the way to the west end, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And run to make a turnaround there?
Okay, I'm just, I just have a mad, just imagine Dr. Lee's going to call him.
I'm going to have to physically drive through it, and I haven't yet, so.
I, I know my staff took a look at it, so I'll have to re, re-talk with them on everything's size, but Chris talked to, to the city engineer and didn't indicate as though there would be any issue, but I'll, I'll revisit it before Monday night.
A lot of brick showing down there, too. Exposed brick, straight brick.
Sorry, Tim. Everybody else good?
Well, if you're going to talk about it on Monday night, it can't be on the consent agenda then, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, no, we need to pull it off, consent.
Okay. Number six. Resolution approving fees for rental housing inspections. Mr. Tisland?
We're looking to increase our rental fee by $10 per unit. Currently, the rental fee is $100 per structure plus 30, $25 per unit, so this would go to $35 per unit during budget discussions. That was estimated around $10,000 increase, which varies year-to-year, since we're on a three- and five-year schedule for single-family and two families every five years, multi-families every three years. Did look at comparison communities and still would put us on par. Kind of fluctuates. Some cities are a lot higher, some are a lot lower, but on average, this will keep us in line with other communities, so. And then clarifying our re-inspection, no-show trip fees. Those haven't been increased in probably 10 years, I think. Last, just regular rental inspection was increased March 1st, 2013, but the other fees haven't been increased since I've been here, so that adds $5 per unit for re-inspections or no-shows. And those aren't things that we do often, but want to make sure that they're strong enough that people don't want to violate those issues.
You guys good with that?
Okay.
Good. Number seven. Resolution of support for the Workforce Housing Tax Incentive Program project by Triple-S Lacing LLC. project by Triple S Lasing LLC.
This was a discussion with Don Chee Dee who owns the apartments there at West Burlington Avenue and West Avenue, adjacent to where the roundabout is going in, but looking to install or construct a new sixteen unit apartment building potentially this year as well. He previously applied under the Enterprise Zone Program before that ceased to be and then the Workforce Housing Tax Credit replaced that. But looking at the two programs, he still would qualify under the old Enterprise Zone since he had an approved application as long as he constructed before twenty twenty, but the Workforce Housing Tax Credit fits him a little better since the tax credits are transferable. There is a couple year wait on ability to transfer tax credits, but would fit his project fairly well. In the past, his apartment complex, or his apartment unit cost has been eighty-nine, ninety thousand per unit. With the Workforce Housing Tax Credit, the maximum cost per unit is two hundred thousand, which for single family, that sometimes can be tough, but when you're building the scale of sixteen units, you would fall under that and meet the maximum per unit cost for Workforce Housing Tax Credits. This gives a refund of sales tax paid during construction as well as an investment tax credit of ten percent up to the first hundred and fifty thousand value per home, so fifteen thousand per unit up to, but if his were eighty thousand per unit, he'd qualify for eight thousand per unit in tax credit, so. That's. As part of the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program, they no longer have to apply through the city. Like the Enterprise Zone, they simply need a resolution of support as well as documenting that there's a local match available. The local match can be in the form of tax payment, TIF financing. Under our regular tax payment program, based on the existing values in the complex, this would be about eight hundred to twelve hundred per year, per unit, and the minimum amount is a thousand dollars per unit over the, I guess, whatever timeframe your tax payment plan would be. So his units would fall just with our normal tax payment program, meeting the local match amount. I don't know if that's clear, makes that a little more confusing, but he has to apply directly through the state and just provide evidence that the city supports his project and would provide the local match in the form of tax payment, which this resolution does.
You guys have questions or?
Do you know where the new unit's going to be?
His, well, right now, he has, on the western side, it'd either potentially be on the southern side or, well, there's a room at the very southwest corner. We haven't received site plans from them as of yet.
You guys good?
Sure.
Yep.
Tim, you had been asked the council to look at workforce housing. Was that in regards to this project? Is there something that you needed us to research for you for future?
This is, this is a good explanation of the workforce tax credits for the next couple that may be coming forward.
We're good? Okay. We have a set date for public hearing for April seventeenth for consideration of transit rate applications and also public hearing previously scheduled for consideration of urban renewal plan for Deer Point Estates. Urban renewal area, April third, two thousand seventeen. Are you coming up here already?
He's talking about goal setting.
Are you coming up here already?
Yeah.
Okay. And Nick, goal setting.
I have some information for you. Thank you. So the goal setting report, so I think this, you did that last February and then I did an update in September. So we're revisiting this again. I think maybe a quarterly basis is maybe a little bit too much for me to try and throw together, but, you know, maybe every six months, try and update you on the certain, certain goals that we, you guys set back in February and maybe reestablish them or reconventate about them now. As you, in some of these projects, I can talk about with pretty good knowledge and other ones, I might have to refer to the other department heads on. But in the first one is to maintain a goal of fifteen percent general fund balance. As of six thirty sixteen, it was at thirteen point three nine percent. Issue about taking out that number right now is the transfers haven't happened. So at the end of the fiscal year this next year, we'd be able to give you a more accurate figure to what that really is. In the sewer separation world, we are currently, I want to jump down, we're already completed with Masl Phase One and Cascade Phase Two, this trunk sewer. In Phase Two, we are currently in construction. Luckily, this winter has been pretty good for us to try and get things completed. We're at about seventy-five percent completion with that. Earlier in the year, we had an amendment to our consent decree to May thirty-first. We are on track to get that completed prior to that. We're expecting by the end of April, we should be done. The Locust Basin, the next line down for Masl, we have hired H.R. Green to begin design on that. We're expected to apply for CGB funding and then go out for spring two thousand eighteen construction. If you move down to the street repair, we just turned in the agency street design to the Department of Transportation. They have a thirty day review period. Because this is a RISE project, they're usually able to turn those around pretty quickly, so hopefully it doesn't take thirty days and we can have a public hearing to go over those plans here, maybe early April, second meeting in April. Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, Stanley Consultants, we hired them back in October and they have begun work. They're about twenty percent of design. The environmental work has been complete and the archaeological is also underway. This has actually seen kind of an increase in timetable. We were projected initially to do an April eighteen letting because this has got a pretty good grant associated with it. We have to do it on the DOT letting schedule. We were projecting now that we're hoping to do it on January of two thousand and eighteen, so it's a couple of months in advance. Mount Pleasant Street from Roosevelt, it's a shared project with West Burlington, all the way out to Gere, is currently under design. My city engineer in tech spent a lot of time on Agency Street. I think back in September, I told you ninety percent of it was complete. Well, I didn't realize the status of where we were. Things were a little disorganized in my department, to say the least, in that area. Unfortunately, when my new staff came on board, we realized we were a lot further behind on Agency than I was told. So we had to play a lot of catch-up on the Agency redesign and therefore, not redesign, I apologize, we, just the general design. So we were a little bit backlogged on some of the other projects and so we wanted to knock that one out because there was a financial timetable ticking on it. So that one is out the door. Mount Pleasant Street is an HMA project. A lot of the work there is quantity based because it's just an asphalt mill and fill. And we talked about that a while back where its plans are to go from a four lane road down to a three lane road with bike lane.
And then, I want to be sure I understand, on Agency Street West, it's gonna be what?
That is a widening project along with traffic signal coordination associated. I don't know if there's really a name for that road, but it's Hobby Lobby and the old Wal-Mart's. That is gonna be replaced with all new traffic lights. And then it's gonna be coordinated from Agency all the way to West Burlington Avenue.
Does that get a center turn lane the whole way or?
It will get a center turn lane.
So it'll stay four lanes with the center turn?
And so the real widening of it is actually after the substation by the railroad tracks.
Is this concrete then or?
It'll be a concrete road.
Okay, the same thing then on, what about Agency? Same thing, basically, or not the same thing?
Agency on both sides will be concrete.
Okay.
Mount Pleasant Street will be an asphalt road.
Asphalt.
It's currently an asphalt overlay, so what that project will entail is they'll go in and mill off two to four inches. I don't know what the plans call for, to be honest, but then they'll relay asphalt down.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then, actually, if you want to throw up the map, Eric, the continue the seal coat program. We are currently under, mostly it's quantity work on this. Eric will be throwing up a map that'll show what we're projected out. It's a fairly substantial map. Actually, you have that in front of you if you want to refer to that. And if you want to scroll down a little bit to show, in the red, yellow, green and blue, that is the MSL sewer basin. And our city engineer overlaid our seal coat roads with that to show the impact that that project is gonna have on our seal coat. So rather than go and fix the seal coats this year and then go in there and then disrupt them and tear them all up in the following eight years, we're gonna try and patch them where we can, but not fix them, bring them back until after the sewer project has come through and already done its disruption. So try not to step our over-owned toes as far as road construction, so. And then the continue street patch and miscellaneous street repair, that's kind of an ongoing goal here. We've already, we've been lucky again with the, with the nice, you know, nice winter. We've been out patching several locations. As far as your report goes, this is where it gets a little thin in the material that I have provided, the continue to improve neighborhoods. You know, several of those don't have any sort of percentages behind them as well as the continued downtown partners, downtown revitalization, and then economic development programs. Mr. Tisland and I have conversated about them, but I don't have them in the report as far as material. I think what really would do these programs good is kind of an ongoing action plan to show who's gonna take care of, you know, what area and, you know, as issues come up to deal with them in that manner. I guess I didn't fill that in very good, but if you bump down to the flood wall, I don't have the red all the way across to where it needs to be. Their plans are more at eighty percent finalizing quickly. The eighty percent to ninety percent gap is pretty quick to close. I know my staff has a meeting this week to review some things and they're still planning on going out to bid here, I would think in the next month, for July first, on construction. And so that, I think we've talked about it quite a bit, but just a reminder that that plan, that, you know, that construction project will take, you know, eight to ten months, you know, maybe pushing a year depending on weather and also the river levels, so. After talking to the police chief, if you bump down, we have, and I'd have to forget the name, but we're at about sixty percent design plans on the renovation of U.S. Bank Building. And I didn't fill anything into the rehab or demo of the Apollo because there's no decision really made on that, but we're obviously talking about that right after me. So the Depot Project, that is something I know pretty well about. It is on its final stages. We met with Klingner and then the contractor and we are on our punch-out list for the Great Room renovation project. So the floors is kind of the biggest open item that's left. Depending on, with Mr. James back here says, on the HDRP grant, we may look at trying to renovate those at that time or whenever, you know, whenever funds are available. Unfortunately, now I know what it has done. It's great that they can look like that, but now the need to look like that. And I agree, they do. So it's, it's just the price tag that comes along with it. The airport runway replacement, it is slated for fiscal year nineteen, federal fiscal year nineteen replacement. The employee handbook, department heads meet next week for kind of a final review. And then the continued promotion, increased representation of minors and females in the workforce. I left it on from before, but PDE had hired the first female minority reserve officer. I know from my department, I have hired a part-time bus driver that's female, but, you know, that's kind of an ongoing. And then the last three on the report is kind of those items, you know, Cascade Bridge has been discussed when Travis from the financial firm.
Hyper.
Hyper Jaffrey. Hyper Jaffrey. You know, kind of showed some projections on when we would be able to afford it based on our bonding capacities. But it's out there. It's, yeah, it's, you know, seven years from now, but.
Keep it on the list, please.
I'll do what I can.
Thank you.
If you want to go through this, we can. This is the final exhibit. If you could throw up, maybe I didn't give it to you. I gave it to you. It's Exhibit A. It's kind of a list of the other programs that you had looked at as potential items to have as goals for things for us to work towards. There are several things on here that we've actually already completed, you know, the phone system, that was upgraded this year. Sanitary Sewer Master Plan, that's on my docket of things to do. So I just, I just wanted to bring this list in front of you again to see if there's something that we want to, you know, I can add to this goal progress report and start tracking on how to get that accomplished, so. I guess I'm throwing the table back at you on this conversation.
I haven't seen this list for a while. It's refreshing my memory. Yeah. I'm sure we're all gonna need a little digestive time on this.
Yeah, I'd like to study this somewhere.
Wifi and city parks.
What's interesting?
You're gonna take care of that next week, right?
I'll see what I can do about it. It's actually, just that you talked about that because I just read an article in the City State Magazine where I think it was Boulder, Colorado, they put, they ran all their traffic lights with fiber and connected them that way. Helps with signalization, but they actually buffed out wifi through the traffic signals.
So people have wifi in the streets.
So citizens had free wifi. So I'm not saying we can do that here. We don't have enough traffic signals to make the network.
Nick, we can't afford free wifi right now. Maybe tomorrow.
If there's anything else for me, I can, I also have a map of the projects that are going on, construction-wise, that I gave to Eric. I thought I talked about that more, but I didn't.
Do you want to hit on that?
Yeah, so in the green, you can see the seal coats that are planned for this year, but you also see kind of a blue, purple color. It's Plain Street and then further down. That is, that is the two thousand and sixteen HMA project that didn't get wrapped up. We had a contractor that was tied to some other jobs and we pushed, at the end of the construction season, so we will be wrapping that up hopefully here in the next month, whenever the asphalt plants open back up. It shouldn't take too long, but Plain Street is a fairly, you know, busy road.
Yes.
And it does need it, so.
It does.
It's just maybe a good reminder that that road is also due to be worked on, but.
Good, good.
Glad to see Dunham Street on here. That's pretty bad, too.
Glad to see Dunham Street on here. That's pretty bad, too. Actually, they're digging that up now.
Probably Intercon is back with the Alliant work. Anything else? I talk too much anyways, so.
So Agency, Agency East, you don't show anything there?
There is nothing that's planned for this year, this construction year. I'm I'm hoping that we can, depending on hiring on new staff and not understanding the amount of work that needs to be done, it's kind of difficult for them to sort out on what needs to be kept in-house and what needs to be farmed out to another firm. In all likelihood, after talking with Jesse about it, this is probably a project we need to get out the door to a to a firm, you know, shortly, so that way we can tell them to get the design on that. Because there's still plenty of, you know, the Jefferson Street addition, the potential Washington and Sixth parking lot. You know, the Storm Sewer at the Depot, which has kind of been on hold because of the sewer lateral that could potentially conflict with it, plus a kind of a shared cost. There's there's numerous small projects that'll keep my staff busy, so that that project is something we'll probably look at farming out, in all honesty. I haven't even talked about that with Jim yet, but it's it's, I think it's the self-realization of the amount of work that is on their plate has has come to and realize that they can't do everything. So as much as I'd like to keep it in-house, it's a lot cheaper, well, I shouldn't say a lot cheaper, it is it is more cheap. More reasonable, more cheap, that sounds intelligent.
The roundabout bids are a week from today?
Correct. We're doing the bid letting on the twenty first at two in this room. And I know we have several, we had a contractor in today have plans, so we should have at least three for sure.
And you had two show up for your pre-bid?
Correct. We didn't make it contingent showing up to that. We we put all the questions together and we put them back out, so. You'll also probably taking up time that isn't really this topic, but you'll also be seeing a resolution come forward for some temporary lighting at Division or at Division in West Burlington Ave. That'll probably stay into the the construction season, but I won't have to talk about that. Anything else for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. James. A consideration of Apollo School proposals?
I don't I don't know if I've got a lot to add at this point, I guess. I mean, I can just recap a little bit. You know, we, back in October, we started the process to do some promotion, get some marketing for redevelopment of the Apollo School building. Southeast Side Regional Planning Commission teamed up with Jesse and Terrace Real Estate. We started that effort in late October with proposals to be back at the end of January. And we got the two proposals that you guys saw the presentations for, I believe it's, excuse me, the thirteenth and the twenty seventh of last month. Two, I think two very good proposals, but two very different proposals. Midwest Cornerstone Property Management, really looking at more of a phased approach, looking at two different phases. And I think even within the first phase, maybe kind of sporting it into two different developments, but really looking more at a market rate and a higher end apartments and floor condos. And then we had FGP Development with the two gentlemen with Anawim Housing and then a gentleman with Terrace Real Estate as well. And that's more of a get it all done right away, a lot more units as well. I think the first proposal and when it would be done would be around forty and the the second one was around seventy-seven. And just the funding sources for both were much different as well. Really Brian's proposal is mostly looking at putting his own cash and loans into the project, was requesting TIF rebate where the other project is mostly financed with tax credits and also with the TIF rebate. And the second proposal with FGP was low income housing tax credit, so it's income restricted, whereas the other one is not. So two very different proposals, I think quality proposals, though. So I guess, I don't know if you have a specific question for me at this point. I guess it's really up to you guys for discussion and providing a direction forward, I guess.
Well, I'm against the low income deal myself.
What's that?
I'm against the proposal, which is the low income housing. I just don't think that fits what we need in this community. That's just my opinion.
Good clarification, Mr. Anderson's proposal was for apartments or was he going to sell individual condos? Did he say? I don't recall.
He, I think in his presentation, it it says apartment slash condos. And the way he's expressed it to me is it could be one, the other, or a mix. Just kind of depends on he could sell it as a condo or if people would rather rent it, he would rent it. So he's kind of open to whatever, whatever, he's basically whatever people are interested, if they'd rather buy it, he would sell it or if they want to rent, they would rent. But as it as he does today, everything he has is rentals.
Everything is rental, right.
I already, I mean, I already said what I, how I felt on it before, and I I would be willing to go with, this is me personally, I'd be willing to go with the Midwest, Mr. Anderson, to give him a try at this building. That's that'd be the only, that'd be the only option I'm willing to, willing to consider on this building.
Do you have any idea what the rental rates would be? Because I know it didn't say in the in the proposal for the Midwest cornerstone. I just didn't know if that was.
What I have, I think you might have got a one-page overview initially, and it says in there eleven hundred to sixteen hundred. Which I think is, he said, yeah, basically in that range. I'd have to go back to the presentation.
I think I think that's, I think that's correct.
Sorry, I've got way too much to do here.
The only reason I ask is because of the housing study that was done that expressed that nearly sixty percent of new rental units will need to be under a thousand dollars a month in order to meet our housing needs.
Right. I forget the, Jim had asked me a couple of questions via email to you, and I sent him, I guess, some comments. And one of the things I sent him was the demand from the housing study. And for Burlington, this is over the next ten-year period. It's for most monthly gross rents. It says between a thousand and fifteen hundred, a hundred and thirty new units would be needed at that rental rate over the next ten years. Fifteen hundred to two thousand sixty units over the next ten years. And then you look at the other side, I don't know how this comes out as a percentage wise, but below seven hundred is three hundred and forty-seven and seven hundred to a thousand is a hundred and twenty. So it's definitely the the lower end is much higher, but according to this, there's demand for the higher end.
You guys have any other questions for Mr. James?
Jim, what do you think?
It's a matter of preference for the the council in terms of what you're looking for from a developer, development. You do have two, two very distinct proposals and development track records.
Right.
The, one group has done several projects comparable to what they're proposing to do here. That doesn't mean that they will be successful here because they still have to go through the application process. That's not, not all of those tax credits are give-me's. They, it's still a process to do.
They're non-competitive, but you still have to go through an application process and.
And some of the, some of those are, is there some question as to whether the, they're going to be at a level that will support or financially support the project? On that, on that proposal with the guys from Anawim?
What was your question?
I guess with the, some of those tax credits, whether they'd be at the ninety-five per, and I don't get how the the federal fund funding works on that, whether they're at a high enough reimbursable rate that they can actually market them and sell them?
Oh, the tax credits?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see what you're saying because there are.
Yes, because I don't know this topic well enough to be able to talk about that.
I think what you're saying is if the tax credits, they are sellable. And so to make their project work, they have to be able to sell them at a certain rate.
Which there's some concern or question about, given the new administration, whether that was going to work or not.
Which I think they said, I'd have to go back and look specifically at the proposal, but I think they said they could make it work around ninety-two cents on the dollar. As of, you know, four to six months ago, they were getting over a dollar for a tax credit where with the new change in administration, that's changed. They felt that it would kind of even itself out after, you know, so much time with the new administration office. There's just a lot of, you know, there's a lot of change in regulations happening, so they're concerned about that.
But that's a spot where even though it's not a competitive grant, it's still a question as to whether that ultimately, whether the, I mean, there's risk for them as to whether this project, they can actually bring to fruition. And I think that's where you see some contingencies in their proposal for the purchase.
What about a cover and the and the other proposal, though?
Now, with the other proposal, you have a developer who has a, who looks like he can get the financing done to make it happen, but he doesn't have any experience in doing a development of this size. And so you've got a risk there. So you've got to risk either with either side in terms of what, whether the project will actually ultimately be successful. But you have different projects that you're going to see be brought about. And it's a matter of which one do you feel comfortable bringing to the market? Seventy-seven units that is on a rent subsidy or or rent restricted? Or do you want to see the market rate with fewer units?
Market rate.
Either one, you just need to know that you've got some some things that may keep the project from ultimately succeeding.
Right.
I think one of the differences probably now compared to transactions with the building in the past is that the city owns the property at this point where before it was just kind of changing back and forth between random owners where I think Jim's mentioned the clawback clauses a few different times. So you're at a, in a little bit different position now where you can negotiate some of those conditions that you must meet this.
Is the first developer okay going through the development with the with the clawback clause?
He's expressed to me that he is, I mean, somewhat depending on what those details are. And I think that would, I don't know what the recommendations would be, but I think whichever way you would go, it would probably be recommending to move forward with some kind of an agreement to bring back at a later date, which would stipulate what those are.
And so if you're looking to move forward with with the market rate style with Brian, he's looking to do a hundred thousand dollars upfront, which we essentially set it, put it in a set aside account because there's some pieces with that that he's looking for down the road, improved lighting, that's.
The street.
The circle, putting in the cul-de-sac, improving that, widening it. But we would want to have something in whatever the agreement is in a way that that allowed us, if the windows weren't done, if the roof wasn't done. And those are some of the primary elements that he's expressed that he wants to get done right as soon as he can. And he's, and I think I handed out a sheet that gave some proposed timelines for it. He's looking over the course of the summer to get a lot of that work done. But if it doesn't occur, we want to have some mechanism to have that ownership come back. And he's, he is agreeable. He didn't like it when I said clawback at the meeting. But there is, if it can be done in a way that he, and and I understand what he's concerned about. He doesn't want to have something where he goes into a bank loan on a project and there's a potential that you, that he doesn't have control of it. So he wants to make sure that he doesn't lose his his ability to control that project, too. It's something that we'd have to work out with Bob Jostin. This is a TIF, this is going to be, would be a TIF project. It's going to need to go through the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment to to encapsulate the the terms that we're looking at. And we'd work with him to see what makes sense for how you do a development agreement. And hopefully we can come, if that's the route that we end up doing, that we can come to some level of of an agreement that is acceptable to both sides. Because I guess we just don't want the property to, our concern is if we went through an awful lot of effort to get the property into our hands, we don't want it to then fail because it's sitting there and we haven't, we don't have any way to do something about it.
Couple of thoughts that I have is that if we were to to go with the LMI project, we're looking at three times the, three, three times the number of apartments and three times the number of people and three times the number of necessary parking spaces. And that's, I think that would potentially put a greater burden burden on us in providing on-street parking and that sort of thing. That was one thing that I that I saw. I think the, the, I think in the, in the end, there may be a higher value on that property. But that just means that we're going to be, if we go with TIF rebate, we're just going to be rebating more money than what we would be putting into this project for the market rate. And having said all that and looking at all that, I do, I'm with Bob, I do prefer the the market rate, the Midwest Cornerstone property proposal, if we're going to go that way. The only thing that I would, that bothers me is the TIF rebate. And we have a downtown tax abatement, housing tax abatement in place. It's a ten-year abatement, seven full years, and then reducing terminate nine and ten. I just wonder if that would produce the same three hundred thousand dollars as the, as the TIF rebate. And and then it would be in keeping with our current policy and not creating something different for one developer. And setting a precedent for, for that. Off the top of your head, Jim?
This is the project that we own and are on the hook to spend seven hundred thousand dollars on demoing if we don't do, which is kind of what, why the idea of having incentive was there for to put out. And we did put it out there, and what we put out in materials is that we'd offer the fifteen-year TIF rebate.
I ask if there, if we done a ten-year tax abatement, if the dollar amounts would be equal to what a ten-year TIF rebate would be?
Um, the TIP, ten-year, I don't know what ten-year tax abatement would provide. It would be, it might be about the same. But is that in our, is that in the, it's not in the area that, this property is not in the area that's eligible for that?
Right, but it's a, it's a policy that we have that could be extended possibly where we don't have a TIF rebate in, that we've done in housing that I can recall in housing of any kind. So both of them would be a policy change on the part of the council. It's just, I I'm, I'm only suggesting it because we already have this policy in place for a portion of the of the city. And extending it, I don't think is, for me, is objective, is objectable. But creating a new TIF rebate plan bothers me.
See, to me, I don't even look at it, I don't look at it that way because to me, I look at this as a, not doing something special for the investor, but this is a special situation with the, if we don't get invested, we've got to tear it down. And the last bill, I think, was seven hundred thousand dollars. That's, I think when we get that, it could be, it could be.
I'm not saying not not do it. I'm just saying let's do a comparison and see if we're talking dollar for dollar. I mean, if we're, if there's, if there's a huge difference in, then I might be able to entertain the the TIF rebate a little ways.
Hey, Tim. Ryan Nagraki, to answer your question on that, on a ten-year tax abatement versus a ten-year TIF, I've ran the calculations. Basically, there's about a a ten percent difference in collection over that ten-year, ten-year timeframe to the benefit of. to the benefit of a TIF rebate. So there is a little bit of a difference between the ten-year tax abatement versus a TIF rebate.
It's a fifteen-year TIF.
This is a fifteen-year project, okay. So I don't, I can't speak to the fifteen.
It's a fifteen-year TIF rebate versus a hundred percent on a tax abatement for seven years, graduated up seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five.
So I was in reference to a ten-year abatement versus the ten-year TIF rebate. There's about a ten percent difference over the course of ten years. So if you did time, value, money, and different calculations you put in there, it'd be pretty much about the same. So I don't know if that helps answer your question.
I, I just wanted to add real quick, sorry, on the, just to make sure that we're kind of all set. When we came in October, we set like a minimum for, so everybody's kind of bidding against the same thing. And when we give the proposal to council, it was the minimum of a hundred thousand dollar purchase. We offered the, the fifteen-year hundred percent tax rebate, or I'm sorry, TIF at that time. So we kind of had the offer and incentives sent out before we went to market with everything.
Which is what the council agreed to do.
But yes, back in, I believe it's October. So we tried to set kind of the standards ahead of time, so that we weren't getting, looking at ten different TIF rebates and different minimum purchase prices. We were trying to set a standard ahead, so, sorry, just to clarify.
Because of the uniqueness, I just want to add of this, of this project.
I don't know if you've done housing rebates before, but I do know it is in an urban renewal area. So I don't have to do an extension of boundaries or anything to do the, to set up the rebate.
No, and you have to, we have to do a TIF project regardless for this, the structure of the sale. That's a flexibility that allows us to do something like this. Whether you are giving a TIF rebate or not, it has to be a TIF project. I'm not sure why we would change what we told the developer la, when we sent out stuff last October. And I'm not sure how the difference works between the tax abatement schedule that's not our, that's not in place that you'd have to amend a district for, but.
So do we?
I got an answer.
I mean, I'd recommend just moving forward with how we told them that we were offering it out there.
So going into, going past this meeting on this.
Which, which one do you want to move forward with, if either?
I'm, I'm ready to move forward with the first proposal.
What?
With the first proposal. Outside of that, I'm not comfortable with the second one.
Right.
And I would, I would go for, that's where I'm at.
Me, too. That's two of us. Jim, what do you think?
I have not changed my position and I'm not going to change my position. The building should have been torn down and that's where I believe should happen to it. And the land cleared and sold and developed as a housing development.
I hope that doesn't have to happen, but.
Anybody, you think?
Well, I really like the first proposal, because he's putting his own financial, he's putting his own finances into it. My only problem is, I, I do realize there is a small percentage of need for that, that market rate, rentals and condos and things like that. But I also know that despite this negative idea that several people seem to have about low, low-income rent housing, I know that me, myself, would not be able to afford the market rate as, you know, a working, working person in a, in a career that I would consider, you know, a job, career, that I wouldn't be able to afford anything but low-income housing. So I, and I, I get that a lot of times people seem to only think that when there's low-income housing, that they're all bad people, not bad people, but it tends to degrade the area, which isn't always the case. And I, I thought that developer made good points about the different kinds of people that it would benefit, such as, you know, people who are in a grocery store, people who work as a gas station attendant, both things of which I have done. And those nurses, I mean, they, they don't make a lot of money, but they still have their honest working people. So, I don't know, I'm still up in the air on both.
I have to, I have to say this. First, I don't want anybody to think that the reason why I'm against this project is because I feel like poor people are, are bad for Burlington. I'm one of the poor people, too. And I don't feel like I'm bad for Burlington. I'm not saying the best thing that's ever happened to Burlington, but not bad for Burlington. Yeah, right. Not bad for Burlington, I'm just not rich in Burlington. So that's not, that's not what, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I'm doing forward thinking. I'm looking at this project and I'm trying to think down the road, how could this project end up? And I don't like the model, I don't like the model. I'm just not comfortable with it. But it's not saying that poor people are bad people. Most of the people I know are poor people and they're great people. They just don't have money. That doesn't make you bad. So that's, I just, I just want to get that out there. That's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying for this project, I don't like it, I don't like it. I, I'd rather tear it down, I have to agree, go back with what Mayor Protem said, I'd rather tear it down than.
I, I like the Midwest cornerstone property, not only for what, what he said he would do for that property, but what he said he would do for surrounding property. And buying up surrounding properties and improving them as well. Investing in the, investing in the neighborhood that needs an investment and bringing up the quality of housing in the area. The, the other part is it's, it's not a gargantuan investment that he's making, but I still think they're going to be very nice apartments based on what I've seen that he's done on, on some of the other properties that he's done. It's going to be a challenge for him because he's, he's not done ones like this before.
Right.
The, and then probably the biggest thing for me is, is demand that the city enforce the, our, our, our housing and nuisance codes in the neighborhood. And I just, I think we need more of that from investors and surrounding developers and surrounding neighbors in development. And that, that definitely needs it. And I, Jim, I, I agree that I, I was one that wanted to see the building come down, but if we can invest three hundred thousand dollars in improving the building versus seven hundred thousand dollars to tear it down, I, I've got to go with the, with the three hundred thousand in tax increment financing. I just really hope to see the property get back on the tax rolls quicker as well. But it's, for, for me, I would say bring this one forward and.
In the event that we would decide to tear it down, and I'm reversing the wheel here, how would we pay for it?
TIF. TIF. Yeah, and.
We had planned, but let's not change the budget. Well, it was, we had talked about it.
We had talked about it.
Yeah.
We have about, we, TIF revenue, we bring in two and a half million annually. And we have to do a finance, financing on this to build that, the payment of that. And we'd borrow the money, build that into repayment. But comparatively, if we have this, we're using all of this next year's. And I haven't even seen how our, our financing is moving out with the projects that we just did and then, or how the Mount Pleasant Street will fit in. But we can, we can fit it into the repayment schedule fairly easily. We have four, four years, just shy of four years' worth of TIF revenue committed on existing projects, existing debt. So we can make a, make a project work to, to get that covered.
Are we good? Yep. Gentlemen, thank you. Mr. James, who said Mr. James, was that Nick?
You want us to go ahead and work on putting together a proposal for working with, with Midwest? Whatever the name of the firm is. So we'll have to get in contact with Bob Josten on the documents that would be necessary to do that?
Okay. And next we have expense reduction services. Who's, who's doing expense reduction services?
Stephanie is. We kind of wanted to highlight some of the things that we have done over the last, and this isn't everything, but this is some of the things that we have worked on to try to reduce costs over the last three years, two to three years.
Yeah, I'll just go through, this presentation was in your handout also. But we were contacted by Brenda Huddleston. She is the owner and operator of this expense reduction services. Basically, I met with her and she comes in and examines all our vendor invoices and all the expense categories, just to see where maybe we could save funds. She makes her money by us saving money. So her fee is a half of every dollar saved. And then we pay her for the next eighteen months on those savings. So as she went through and started working in August, I'd say she was probably, she was here for about a week physically. And then, of course, she works remotely from her home. But she did have at least four hundred hours in reviewing and following up with our vendors. So basically, she went through and asked she'd find recommendations. You know, they didn't all come at once. It was as gradually as she put together her, her things. We joined a few co-op purchasing groups with, which helps us get better pricing. One of her suggestions was to purchase janitorial supplies in bulk, one to two times a year from a local vendor. So she negotiated with the local vendor to give us better pricing. And what did that look like, you know? How many times did we have to order and what quantities? But then we set it up that that has been savings for us. Telecom, you know, this is an item that I know, when Annette was hired, we, you know, we needed to look at it. We wanted to look at it. It was just who had the time to do it. So basically, she scoured through our telecom bill and went through every line, met with all different departments. We tested lines, you know, where she found errors in the bill. You know, we were given money back, we disconnected lines, things we weren't using for over the years that, you know, somebody thought they had done it, but didn't actually get to the telephone company. She had a lot of time in that. Electricity, as a result of Brenda trying to figure out how our bill is calculated, Alliant came back and did a full physical inventory of all our streetlights. And now, like Nancy had said last week, we actually became the pilot program to launching their new billing system, since they had basically went through our entire bill and revamped it. So this is the savings that we've had to date, that we've paid to Brenda, the fifty-two thousand. Twenty thousand of that has come off telecom savings. Office supplies were thirty-one hundred, you can, janitoria thirteen hundred. Electricity, twenty thousand by redoing that. And the reason electricity is so high is Alliant did go back five years and we got a sixteen thousand dollar refund for going back that far. And again, she got eight thousand of that, so, no, I'm sorry, thirty-two thousand was our refund and then she got sixteen thousand of that. She also identified vendors for food at Rexplex and golf course. So that obviously has helped those two out. One of the things to point out, too, is this is what she found. So a lot of what she didn't find were things that we were already getting the best prices. And, you know, the department heads really do look line by line, item by item, trying to find the best prices. So though this is, you know, the savings is nothing to turn away from. The total was a hundred and five thousand when you add it together and we paid half of that to Brenda. We will see her, we went through, she started earning savings as we, you know, started identifying the savings. So her contract will begin to expire in April through July. Some of the savings came later because they took longer to get back. So once then, we won't pay her anymore. Obviously, we'll just reap the savings going forward, so. Does anybody have any questions on what she did or what that was all about?
So I'm, I'm assuming you feel this was worth doing?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't cost us a thing. It was the, the time that we did not have to, to put in. When, over four hundred hours, that would have taken us a long time to, would allow somebody to, to really devote that time to it. Like I said, I, I think all of us, the items she really found were things that we probably wouldn't have thought of. You're so into your day-to-day and getting your three quotes and, you know, when somebody needs office supplies, you, you go to the three places, you get your quotes. Now, now we go to Staples Advantage and we get the best prices. They've already got the lowest prices for us. Same with the janitorial supplies. We now order in bulk. There's no question if you, you know, we wait till we have a larger order, so.
As you talk about the supplies, a lot of the supplies that we get, we have a couple of national, what's our, what's our group purchasing programs that we use?
Well, it's that, yeah, the National Joint Power Alliance, NJPA is one of them, or US Commodities.
So those are a couple of different associations that we're able to be, that we're a part of. They have national contracts with suppliers and all vendors in a lot of different categories, auto parts.
Yeah, for example, we just bought the, Mytel System was the new phones that we've all have now. And by being a part of that group, our phones were discounted thirty percent, just being, by being part of that, so.
Those are designed to be prices, the National, NJ, what is that?
NJPA is what it's called, National Joint Power.
For them, when they do a, a group contract, that's designed to be their lowest price on anything. So if you're going to buy from one of their vendors, we're, we're, we're not supposed to be able to find any other way to buy it at a cheaper price from one of those vendors and through their, their contract with that agency. So there's a lot of things that we've done besides that are, which is why for those things, they weren't things that she had the ability to identify.
Right. And then also in your packet, there is, if you want to switch the camera. We just did a recap of our budgeted full-time employees in the past ten years. So you could really see where, you know, cuts have been made in what departments in the past. So, I mean, I don't need to go over this. Obviously, some of the larger decreases in employees you're going to find when we contracted with VenueWorks, we, you know, downsized a couple of employees in the auditorium. Also, DESCOM was created in the police department. And so we lost full-time equivalents, you know, that were in the budgeted police numbers in the past. But you can see by departments how the positions have been eliminated since FY twelve is when you see most of the positions eliminated. This one is a little bit different than what was in your packet. The library wasn't included in that one. So we, this one, the one that's up there and was handed out to you includes the library. And you can see their cuts that they've made. Did anybody have any questions on this or want me to go through it?
Thanks for the information.
Thanks.
Okay. And then the last sheet that was in there was just, again, recapping the deficit balances that have cleared since six thirty eleven. When Jim came on board, we were at that eight point five million. And then as of six thirty seventeen, the goal is, we'll have deficit summit fund balances that are in deficits, but it won't be continuing, it'll be timing differences based on grants, based on projects, so.
That's nice to see.
But there won't be, all the balances that had standing deficit balances have all been cleared up.
That's great, that's good news. Good work.
So we just kind of wanted to show you some of the recaps of the cuts that have happened over the past five years. Any questions or?
Bill?
That's great.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you, council and staff for staying the course.
Well done, well done. Mr. Tusslin, anything? Stephanie? Council lady?
No, thank you.
Councilman?
Yeah, I neglected when we were talking about the, the housing process at the, or project at the Apollo Building. Because I had several conversations with landlords. One of them said that he's had properties for, this one particular property for fifty years. And he said it's the first time he's ever had six vacancies, ever in fifty years. I had a, another property on. I had a, another property owner said they had 21 vacancies. Had another one, two others that said they had nine vacancies. And all of these would be more in the low to moderate income range. I, I told them I would express that and their concerns for the, over that project. And then the other was the attainment building coming online soon, which is a very similar project as well.
The only thing I had was, we just, we had Snow Bull Thursday, Friday, Saturday night at Burlington Memorial Auditorium. It was phenomenal time. I got a chance to go down there and be a part of it. On Thursday night, I saw Jim Furno, his, his son took him, gave him a ride down there. I was glad that your son had pity on you. But it was, it was just phenomenal, it was a great event for the community, for the city of Burlington. I would encourage people, if you didn't get a chance to, to go down to Snow Bull this year, that they're going to be coming back again next year. So it'd be a great opportunity to get a chance to see some people ride some bulls and it's just a lot of good fun. And nobody got hurt, so that's, that's always good. Anyways, that's all I've got.
Mayor Protem?
Go, Mr. Fleming.
Nothing here this time.
Mr. Mack?
A reminder, I, I think I sent it out in my update and we've also sent out a news release, but tomorrow and Wednesday, Bluff Road or Highway 99 will be closed for some debris removal behind the retaining walls. We'll also be doing some, some patchwork on the road. So we contacted both Iowa and Illinois DOTs as well as the, the large businesses down there and let everybody know. So just wanted to remind you guys that that road's going to be closed for the next couple of days.
Where'd we get you from again?
Nebraska.
I guess Nebraska does some good things once in a while. Jim Furno?
Difference between the 10-year standard or the TIF abate, or tax abatement that we have in the downtown area, just a comparison, a million dollars, if it was a million-dollar assessment, our overall combined levy is about 42 bucks. That would be, without doing any, without doing any rollbacks or anything, like 355,000 in 10 years of tax abatement that they would receive. On a 15-year TIF rebate on the same valuation, they would receive 510,000 back. So there is a difference in, in what the two formulas provide. They only receive off of $34 of valuation for the TIF rebate, but it does, it does bring them over 15 years a larger, a significant amount.
Can you shoot, can you shoot a copy of that in email to?
It's just, that's just a, a rough back of the napkin, just a comparison. And that is, you can do any dollar amount on that, but I'll, I can, yeah, I can send that to you as a what, a what-if on it.
Was there a cap on that, on, on that, for that project?
We'd have to put one on it. I don't think we have put one on it. We did 15-year TIF rebate and we'd have to do an estimated value and what that would amount to. And we'd be subject to annual appropriation. And the two, the comparison, you mentioned that there are a lot more units. It's not three times, that is, it is a lot more units. It was 77 versus 44, so it is still twice as many, significant amount much of more foot traffic on it.
I just saw the 22 on the.
That's first phase, he's doing it over two phases. And, and it may be that he never gets that second phase done, but his goal there is to build out 40 units. He didn't include that on that one page. The only way you're going to get the, the full 40 units was if you went back to his initial presentation.
That's why I had the 33, because it was 22 and then the, the tax increment financing showed 300,000.
Yeah.
But that's just phase one.
Yep. So really, that's all I had. Both Nick and I are going up, going to be gone the majority of this week, Wednesday through Friday, so.
Oh, the only other thing is the police department's going to be playing the Midwest Magic on the 20?
6th Sunday at 4.
On the 26th, Sunday at 4. The fridge told me to tell you personally that you're going down, so. There's nothing else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
You're going down, chief.